Okay, Mr. Chairman, I believe we're ready.
This is the meeting for the Mobile City Planet Commission for Thursday, November 5th, 2020. General procedures for this remote meeting are as follows. I will announce an application. Items where no one from the public is attending via Zoom, staff will give an overview, including any comments received from the public. If a member of the public will attend the meeting, staff will announce their attendance and admit them at this time. Once the parties have joined the meeting, if needed, I will state the commission's rules regarding the number of speakers as well as speaking time. Each application is limited to a maximum of four speakers in support and four people in opposition, limited to five minutes each. I will then announce the beginning of the public hearing. The applicant will present their case and up to three additional speakers if applicable. For each speaker, at the end of their presentation, I will ask if there are any questions from any commission members. Once the commission concludes their questions of the speakers in support of an application, I will then call for interested parties to speak. At the end of each speaker's presentation, I will again ask if there are any questions from the commission. The applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut in accordance with commission rules, two minutes. After the rebuttal, I will declare the public hearing closed and the commission will go into deliberation session. After the commission has rendered a decision, the applicant and concerned parties will be sent back to the waiting room by staff where they can disconnect. I will then call the next agenda item. Commission members and staff, please remember to keep your microphone on you unless you are speaking to the meeting attendees. We have our roll call, myself present, Ms. Libby Latham. This is Jennifer Denson.
Here.
Mr. Cart Blackwell. Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Alan Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Ms. Beth Rich. Mr. Don Hembry.
Here.
Mr. Jay Stubbs.
Here.
And we have a quorum. I see Ms. Beth Rich on the list. I just didn't hear her answer wrong, so. Knock her here. We have the agenda before us. It's been emailed to you. I move the agenda, yes?
Second, the second.
Properly moved and seconded for approval of the commission agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, as have it. Agenda is approved. We'll begin with item number one, which is holdover. Five thousand range line crossing drive. Two-part subdivision, which is recommended for tentative approval. PUD, which is also recommended for tentative approval. Staff?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have admitted into the meeting the engineer, Mr. Aserisi or his staff, as well as, I believe, the surveyor, Mark Watier, and Chris Pfeifer and Christopher Huffman.
Hey, guys. This is Christopher Huffman.
And Mr. Huffman.
Hey, it's Mark Watier. Jack and Jaden with Aserisi Associates will be joining us also, guys.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Margaret.
We have not received any correspondence from them, so if they have any issues with recommended condition, now would be the time for them to speak.
Gentlemen, do either of you have any issues with the recommended conditions?
Yes, maybe this is Christopher Huffman. I may be jumping the gun a bit, but I was unclear on one of the conditions. That was that the certificate of occupancy for our project would be conditioned upon off-site improvements that are the responsibility of third parties, specifically the master developer, I believe, R.L. Reggie. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Here, I will attempt to address the issue, Mr. Chairman. As the commission is probably, will probably recall, range line crossing is this overall development shown on the screen, and it has come before the commission in phases. As part of that phase, traffic impact studies have been submitted and reviewed, and with the development that has occurred along the service road here, off-site traffic improvements per the studies associated were required. Timing got off, and those off-site improvements have yet to be installed. However, they have now been permitted by both the city for the city right-of-way improvements as well as ALDOT for their improvements, so they are underway. Staff's recommendation of that condition is to ensure that those improvements that have already been required are implemented before the businesses in this building on this site are up and running and further adding to traffic in the infrastructure.
Yes, and that makes logical sense that the improvements seem to be in place before customers, you know, additional traffic is generated by this, by this development. But I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. It's the certificate of occupancy that will be held up, but not the construction, the process of building the building. Is that, am I reading that right?
You're reading that correctly. It is the certificate of occupancy, not the land disturbance or building permits.
Okay, and I guess my next question, do we, do we know if there is funding in place for these off-site improvements? Of course, I'm, I'm game playing in my head that the responsible parties for these off-site improvements take off and go to the Virgin Islands for extended vacation. The off-site improvements never get completed, and then I can, I get sued by my, my tenants who are ready to open for business. It puts me in, in extreme state of jeopardy, relying upon the actions of a third party, required actions of a third party, of which I have no control, and that per our own traffic study, you know, done by, by John's group, that, that our, our, our development does not sufficiently increase traffic above that that is required of the master developer. Because of our development, there's no additional off-site improvements required, so it's, it puts me in a bad spot. What assurances do I, do we have, do you have, the city have, that, that these off-site improvements will be done other than there's a building permit in place?
There are permits in place as well as bonds, so that if those improvements, somebody goes to the islands, the bonds will be invoked to construct.
And, and, and the bonds are earmarked specifically for this use, and if the third party goes away, then this work will still happen. That's, that's, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
That I cannot address specifically.
All right, well, let me, allow me to rephrase. So the, and, and thank you for stepping me through this, so I understand. There is a bond in place for these improvements. Monies are set aside for these improvements.
That is my understanding as well.
Okay.
The improvements that were required for what has already been built.
Yes, yes, and our traffic study indicates that no additional improvements are required because of our development.
Margaret, I might suggest that Mr. Huffman follow it with his person he's purchased the land from. I'll make it clear that there are no city, city funds associated with this, and so he, he's right to be cautious, but I think it's a risk that he can take, you know, upon his own, own choosing.
The, the documentation on the bonds, is that, how can I get a handle on that?
I'm not sure who's holding the bonds. Mr. Aserisi might know. I think he was involved with permitting. So had permits actually been submitted and permits been pulled, because that would have been what would have triggered the bond.
Yes.
Ken McGrew with S. Beller. He had said in a previous meeting with, about this project that if, if they went to the islands, he said that this project in particular would be completed. They have a bond in particular for this project. Then I could get the bond from Ken for you, Christopher, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Jack. That was my main concern.
This is Mary Beth Bergen with Traffic Engineering, and not to speak out of turn, but just to let everyone know. The contractor has been in touch with us, and they intend to actually start construction next week. Not only does the city hold a bond, but ALDOT holds a bond as well for the work in Range Line Road.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mary Beth, while you're here, real quick, there was one letter that was received from a Jan Evans, expressing a concern about traffic. While you're speaking about this item, could you address these concerns about traffic impact on this particular site?
That's not this site, Mr. Hembry.
Range Line Road Interstate?
It's been the item number three.
Okay, sorry about that. I was trying to find the number on it. I just saw Range Line.
So just to be clear, this is not a, an issue with our project, with this particular project. Is that correct?
This is Doug Anderson. This is an issue, yeah, with your project, because the off-site improvements were approved or were required for the entire PUD.
Yes.
So Margaret can correct me if I'm wrong, but those off-site improvements have to be completed prior to your CO.
Yes. Thank you, Doug.
That is correct.
Okay.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On the bond that the city holds, Margaret, how, what kind of timeline does that involve for the city then to pull the trigger on having to implement the bond usage to make the improvements? Is there a timeline on that for, since permits have been pulled? Okay, the permits have been pulled for the right-of-way permits to actually install those improvements. Permits have been pulled with the city and with ALDOT, both of which have been bonded, so that if the contractor or developer that owns those two permits, those bonds cover the work to complete. Correct. It's not the city. Right, no. Doing it. What is the timeline for them to do these improvements? Because I think that's the kind of conflict that might be in place in listening to the applicant about having tenants when he's ready to go and then no CO. So is the timing going to work? I, I'm just not familiar enough with this process. I can't recall if there was a time on those, but we're trying to find out. Okay.
Margaret.
Because that might give the, this applicant comfort in knowing that, you know, there won't be that conflict of his project being completed, but then the thing that holds up is CO not being done. Right. Because I think that's the concern.
Don't the permits expire after a year?
I, the right-of-way permits, I could, okay. Mary Beth, can you possibly answer those questions?
That is my under, if work hasn't started within a year, they expire. The permits were just issued within the last month, and if they do get started on Monday or Tuesday like they are planning, they're estimating it's going to take about two months with the different phases that they have going on. So just to say this as well, shortly before this project even came to the commission, there was already angst about the work not being done yet, and ALDOT had already started the process of invoking their bond. So if it's not the city, it's ALDOT, and if, as soon as this work gets started, there is vested interest in, in both parties to see this done. So I don't see them letting them get started and not finish. It, I don't think it will be a year if the bonds, if, if the permits are expired. If they walk off the job, I think ALDOT will have, have words to say about that.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is Chris Pfeifer. Sorry, I was having issues with my phone. Hope you all are all doing well today. We are the third, third-party best out there, and essentially what we, just to help you understand, one, we're local ownership. We're not going anywhere. We're not going to the islands. We've been, we've been working diligently to get these improvements done, and it's required a, a, a great deal of work with the previous owner and the construction company. And so there's a bond in place, and then there, we have an agreement with the city as well in place. So it's, uh, there's two assurances there, Christopher, if, if, and, and the rest of the people. I heard your question earlier, so I'm, I just wanted to answer that for you, that, that it will get done.
Thank you, Chris. I, I really appreciate that.
That's good news.
I have a question, not to stir the pot or anything, but what, what happens if there's cost overruns above construction budget? As we know, that does happen. Is there sufficient padding in the bond? Is there, what, what would happen in the case of change orders?
That's, yeah, that's just part of the, the construction process. It will, it will be handled.
That, that was my main concern with the, the, the comments.
Yeah, I totally understand those. Understanding.
Any additional questions or comments?
Bert, were there any comments from any of the neighbors? I didn't receive any of them. That's one that I had mixed up there.
We have not. Mr. Hembry, that's correct. We have not received any feedback from anyone in the neighborhood regarding this application.
Okay.
Are there any additional comments or questions by the owner?
I don't think so, unless, unless you guys have questions for me.
There were, there were a few items that I was unclear on in reference to traffic studies, and I think it's a bit of a blanket statement for this entire PUD that as new developments come on, additional traffic stays will be required. I guess I just want to get a sense that, that the traffic study we submitted was sufficient specifically for our development. There was language in some of the agenda notes just indicating revised studies being required. And again, I think that is for future development. I just want to make sure that we've completed our requirements with our traffic study for our site. Is that correct? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Almost, and if you haven't received copies of them, I will make sure you do. I, I did have comments regarding the study that was submitted. There were some, there were some things that need to be corrected for it to be considered final, and I think if the traffic engineer sees them as well, he would, he would agree. And so it's minor revisions, not anything that would change the overall content, but if this study sits on the shelf for a little while before we see another one, I want us to know that it's a complete study and it's logical and makes sense. So there's some minor revisions that need to be made, and, and I think it's all just grammatical or data-driven that we need to see before we will approve our review on a permit.
On a, on a, not a certificate of occupancy.
Correct.
But a building permit.
Yes, for the building permit. It should be very relatively minor in nature, the changes that are needed, and so it should not be a very timely effort to make those revisions. But there is, yes, a blanket statement in there about future revisions overall for the PUD down the road as there's more development, and that is absolutely for down the road with more development.
Okay, okay, so I'm just going to say what you said to make sure I understand it. Minor changes, grammatical and data-driven changes need to be done to our traffic study for our site in order to get, and, and sent to you for approval in order for us to receive a building permit.
Correct. That is how the language is written.
But not, but, but these changes are not based on.
Any other development.
Any other development. Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just due to the unique nature of this Zoom meeting and all the people that we have had to, had speak for the applicant, I would like to, for everyone to give their name and address for the, the minutes, please.
I'll go first. Christopher Huffman. My address is 3955 Pine Brook Drive South, Mobile, Alabama, 36608.
Jacqueline Jadwin. Address is 6170 Omni Park Drive, Suite C, Mobile, Alabama, 36609.
Chris Pfeifer. Office address is 1108 Dolphin Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36604.
Mr. Watier?
Yeah, Mark Watier, 4318 Downtown or Loop North, Suite H, Mobile, Alabama, 36609.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's everyone I had admitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or other comments? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing session.
Chairman, we're going to take these one at a time, the PUD and the subdivision?
Yes, we'll start with item one, Part A subdivision.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes? Part B, the PUD, is that motion?
Did you both say A, B, C, and D?
Maybe we did.
Well, we'll take Nick as the initiate and.
I'll, I'll second Matt's motion. How about that?
That's fine.
I thought the motion was begun by both Nick and Don Hembry.
It was, so we'll take the motion by Nick, and we'll have a second by Don. Yes.
There we go. Findings of fact, sorry about that, Nick.
So who, Nick, could you give us our findings of fact again for the record?
Findings of facts, A, B, C, and E.
Okay, thank you.
Now second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your polls? Item passes? Move to group applications, item number two. 5377 Moffett Road High Subdivisions. Parts A and B. Subdivision application is recommended for tentative approval. However, the zoning portion of the application is recommended for holdover until December 17th meeting. Staff, anybody who can make it here?
Yes, sir. I've admitted Stephanie Groves and Matthew Roberts for the application, and then I have also admitted in opposition or concern Alice Blockston and L'Oreal Kelly. I also need to bring to the commission's attention that you have received comments in opposition or concern from Alice Blockston, L'Oreal Kelly, and Gerald Mosley.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to our meeting. We're reviewing your application. Staff, could you give us the overview?
I would like, since we have the applicant, Ms. Groves or Mr. Roberts, can you hear?
Yes, can you hear, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Mr. Chairman, if you.
Our Ms. Peppers?
Ms. Groves, if you would, please give an overview of the application.
Can we get to, okay, we're getting to, okay. This is what was on the screen, wasn't the current application. Basically, this site is located at 5377 Moffett Road. We are applying for both a subdivision, one-lot subdivision, and also for rezoning of this property. It is currently zoned R1, and we are requesting zoning of, excuse me, I'm sorry, V2, I'm sorry, V1. And basically, our client is looking to do a multifamily apartment complex here. That's what, what they're thinking about right now. And so we've submitted for the subdivision and the rezoning to, to get the correct zoning for that use. Is there anything else you need me to add, or?
Well, the staff had recommended approval of the subdivision. However, we did recommend holdover of the rezoning to allow a PUD to be submitted as well as justification for the rezoning, you know, based on the four principles in the zoning ordinance by reason.
Yeah, and I had sent something back to Bert yesterday that we were applying for under condition number four of the, of the section 64-9. And then I, we just needed some clarification. We didn't, we, we thought we could go through rezoning without doing the PUD and do the PUD after the rezoning was done.
They do it concurrently to save you time, don't they?
And, you know, you can do that, however, like I said, the application, since there was not the justification submitted, and as it is known that the proposed plan would require pre-PUD approval, it is always recommended that those applications be submitted and reviewed concurrently rather than sequentially.
Okay. That's the clarification I needed.
Okay.
Is there any other clarification or description by commissioners or staff? By commissioners or staff?
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, so the, there was, there's no justification that we have currently for the, for the proposed rezoning to be one. So we are, we're holding over on that, correct?
Um, evidently, it was emailed yesterday after yesterday. Uh, and that would have been number four, based on what Ms. Groves said. Which is the subdivision of land into building sites makes reclassification of the land necessary and desirable.
I mean. These are just, these are apartments, right?
They are residential structures, multiple on one side, which of course would require a PUD.
Yeah, but have it, the B one zoning seems needless. I mean, other apartment complexes would have offices and they're R three. Uh, so, okay, anyway.
That's correct. It would be allowed under R three as well.
Well, that might ease the neighbors' minds a little bit.
Well, we do have, uh, two neighbors in the meeting. When their, their time comes to speak.
I need some clarification, please. I think I'm following the concerns here, but on the, as far as the subdivision is recommended for approval, as is, no problem. Rezoning is recommend, is recommended for holdover to allow for the, for a PUD to be submitted. And for, uh, rezoning justification. But they sent an email giving their justification for rezoning, but they have not provided a PUD.
That is correct, and their justification was just given here at the meeting.
Okay, so. We still need to hold the rezoning over because they haven't provided a PUD. And we need to get clarification as to whether or not this needs to be R three or B one.
It is allowed in either zoning classification, however, as Mr. Anderson points out. The proposed use is allowed in R three.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Margaret.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on the, um, PUD, would that talk about curb cuts? Um, particularly into that McIntyre, I guess that's McIntyre Drive. Right now, it's a solid line, so it looks like it's not having egress and ingress, but. It, I, I, you know, I just curious whether that's addressed with the PUD.
It can be addressed both with the rezoning and with the PUD. PUD, of course, being site plans.
Yeah, it'd be good to keep everything together.
Yes, ma'am.
See that point. Thank you.
Margaret, something I just re- recognized, on their entrance on Moffett Road, uh, that would be an ALDOT, uh, permit. So I don't know if ALDOT will allow that split drive or not, so it's just something to have to get to be aware of and then want to reach out to ALDOT. Just make sure that our documents reflect what ALDOT will or will not approve.
And, uh, and I think traffic engineering had kind, they didn't get specific, that specific in terms of the design. But that ALDOT would have to approve it.
Any other clarifications or? For the, by the commission, for the commission, by staff or the owners before we let? Uh, and is there anyone else for the owner who would like to speak?
Yes.
Give us your name and address and then you can speak.
Um, Alice Blockston, my address is sixteen oh one McIntyre Drive.
Ms. Blockston, I think you're in opposition. You're not with the owner, correct?
Yes, I'm the owner, uh-huh.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Okay.
Um, I think she's misunderstanding you, Margaret. She's not the owner of the property.
Okay.
No, I'm the, I'm the owner of the property of sixteen oh one McIntyre Drive.
Which is in a, a budding property.
Yeah, you're in opposition to this, you're in opposition to the development. That's what they're asking.
Or has interest. Okay.
Yes, right now, we're, I'm asking whether is the owner, is anyone else for the owner of the actual property being developed? Want to speak or have something else to add to it before I let those in oppositions.
Okay.
Hearing no additional comments or, or support from other speakers for the owner. I'll now open the floor for, uh, those in opposition to speak. So at this time, Ms. Blockston, you, you have a right to speak.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, um, I was, I'm very concerned about this, uh, the street, for the street opening. I didn't want that done over here because it's really, I like it the way it is for us to. The quietness and the peace that it has over here. Now, for us to feel that lot being cleared out, I've been calling three one one for years. I've been over here since two thousand and three and I've been calling three one one for someone to come out and clear it out. Because, uh, the owner that was there, he was the older guy. He would cut some of the property, but he wasn't, he, he didn't, as y'all can see, it's not cleared out, period. He, he, he couldn't do too much of it. So, uh, for as the. For as the streets, for as McIntyre being open, I didn't want that done, period. And for as the lot being cleared out, that's fine. For us that, I just didn't, I didn't know what he was putting over there because of the. For as the, like a plasma center or anything like that, I didn't, you know, I just, I, they had one around the corner. And it was just a disaster. So I assume that's why they closed it down or whatever. I just didn't know what he was putting out until they sent the letters. So now that I see it's gonna be a subdivision, what type of subdivision is it gonna be? Is it gonna be like for what, section A people, or I mean, what, what is it gonna be like? I mean, cause I'm concerned about that too. I don't want the neighborhood to go down, you know, for us that.
We don't, the current proposal is for, uh, multifamily, uh, units on, on the site. But the level, the socio demographic of that development or tenant, we do not know. That it's not being proposed at this, at this time.
And, and I would just add, it's also illegal for us to take something like that into consideration.
Okay.
Because we don't have the PUD, we don't really know whether there's intention to ta, uh, tie into McIntyre or not, correct?
It appears that the parking. Does stop here and not necessarily connect with McIntyre Drive. The PUD, of course, would be site plan specific. Uh, but also the commission can deny access to McIntyre. For the rezoning and for the one lot sub as well.
So we can do it during the subdivision of the property and that one looks as though it might move forward, but we could make that a requirement. That it not open to McIntyre.
That's correct.
Okay.
Margaret.
That seems like, seems like the most logical path forward.
We've done that quite a few times over off Old Shell across from south on, on all the developments there.
What, Margaret, what was the criteria? I know that we've got a couple of, of much larger developments that have a gate. Uh, a fire department gate there. Is that, is that something that's just a threshold of the, of the number of units that triggers that? Or what was it that allowed that? Cause that has been one way of compromising in the past.
Um, what we could do is. If the property is rezoned multifamily, um. And is not tied to a PUD. And tying it to a PUD's become a little controversial, however. You can deny it access to McIntyre except for emergency purposes. And then that gate that the fire department, if they put their sirens on, yell, it'll open. You know, it could allow emergency access. So you could put the note on the plat that says denial of access to McIntyre Drive except for emergency access.
Yeah, I know one of the, with the more recent apartment complexes, there was. There was, there were some fire department challenges or concerns about access during construction as well. Being able to access it if, if somebody got hurt on a construction site. Well, this site does not appear to be nowhere near as large as that one. I just didn't know what those triggers were that might have, that might warrant that or allow that.
Well, and it is during construction as well because the fire department needs to be able to access all of the buildings. And fire trucks and dirt roads after a rain do not cooperate with each other. So, you know, allowing access via McIntyre Drive. But again, that's emergency access.
I, I think what, what, uh, the one on West Drive that has, that, that's the most recent gate, you know, gated type of facility. And so that it didn't open to West Drive. I think for construction, um, it was, it was more when they got the CO that the gate was in operation. Now, uh, for the one on East Drive, it was keeping the construction out of the neighborhood. If they came through with construction, so that's something that you can talk to the, you know, whoever is building the project. But I don't, I don't think the gate is, uh, up until they start renting the units and people start living in it. It's, it's not, you know, there for construction time, to my knowledge.
That is correct, but if the denial of access is on the plat except for emergency purposes. Uh, city will not issue them a curb cut to even for construction to come in here. But you would potentially want a fire truck to be able to get closer with hose lines to these. Buildings, especially if they're wood frined during construction.
And, and I think it's, it's probably worth mentioning that, uh, you know, the nearest fire station would likely approach that. Neighborhood from McIntyre if they had the opportunity, because otherwise they'd have to go around their elbow to get to their thumb to get to the front entrance.
Yeah, they, they'd be coming up Moffett. Is that what you're saying? As opposed to going winding through the neighborhood?
No, because they'd be coming through, they'd be coming from the overlook, uh, fire station. Uh, and they'd probably come up the, uh, what is that, Racine Avenue and turn onto McIntyre. That would be faster than, you know, going up Mississippi Street and turning back around to get to the entrance of.
Well, well, is there a curb there now? At McIntyre, or does it just end?
I think right now it just ends.
Yeah, so that all that wouldn't happen until there was the gate and they were getting ready to occupy, so.
Margaret, I'd like to have on, have on the record, and I, I think that, that needs to make sure they understand. The surfacing requirements during construction, uh, for the, for the police and fire access. Cause I know that, that created a concern with, again, another, another past development, so they just need to make sure they underst- understand that.
Have a question regarding the development. We have eight buildings. How many units are, they're going to be in each building?
Ms. Groves, how many units were per building?
Um, I believe it's four.
Thirty-two residents. Thirty-two residents.
Thirty-two units, four per building. There's eight buildings, right? Correct, yes, ma'am. But that, but this is not their PUD, so we're, we're only talking about subdividing and, and denying access except for emergency. For McIntyre. That, that would be something we could do at this point, but we're not looking at a PUD.
Correct.
Or the rezoning, correct? We're subdividing basically here.
Correct.
Would be wise just to wait, uh, until, and deal with that issue on McIntyre once the PUD is submitted.
You can hold over all, both of them. Be good.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
It's nice when things are all together and you're looking at the entire program.
I agree.
Is there anyone else here to speak, again, in opposition to this?
Yes, I have admitted, uh, yeah, Kelly, L'Oreal Kelly.
Um, Ms. Kelly, could you please give us your, uh, name and address for our record?
It's L'Oreal Kelly. Also present is my husband, Brian Kelly. It's fifty-four eighty Carriage Woods Court.
Okay, thank you. You, you have the floor to express your concerns.
I just wanna state first, um, no one in this community, um, including McIntyre, Carriage Woods. And Racine that, that have communicated among. Most each other have any interest in this project going forth in any manner. That it, it does not fit with, with our way of living here. We are a, a, a close-knit, quiet family community. You know, rent, renters are transient. That, that doesn't fit with, with our current way of life. Um. You know, that there is no, no description in here. Um, there's a, says that a statement would be required, um. Giving the effects to the, the neighboring areas. Um, they're. All negative. Um, you know, it, it's increased noise, it's increased traffic, increased crime. We're not a neighborhood full of bars on our windows, and that's what we'll turn into. Um, you know, examples of how rental units have gone over in this area, you can just look at, I'm not sure the name of it. But the, the apartment units on Overlook, um.
Overlook in Mississippi.
Just, just across from the other end of Racine down Overlook. The apartments are a nightmare. They're a mess. They're, they're an eyesore. Or, you know, we have the. I don't even know what it's called, the, the multi-building motel just down off it from the proposed site. Um. That's where all the sex offenders that are just paroled go. You know, it, it's, we, we don't need any more non-family units in this area. It's, our property values are gonna tank. Crime is going to go up. Um, and, and in no way should McIntyre be opened up. McIntyre is twenty-six feet from curb to curb. We're not a neighborhood that parks on our front lawns. There are usually cars parked next to the curb. Um, probably not the best. Proposed route for the fire trucks. Um, you know, it, it's, we're a dead end and a cul-de-sac. We, we don't need through traffic. Once leaving McIntyre, you enter Racine, which is already a really dangerous cut-through street from Moffett to Overlook. Um, it measures paved. Twenty and one-half feet from side to side in it. People already raced down it. Speed bumps have been requested in the past. That's never happens. This, this whole plan is just negligent to this community. Um, had we been given more time to prepare, the neighbors were willing to sign a petition against this whole thing going through. There's just no benefit to this area. There's no need in this area. There's nothing walkable. There's no major industry. There's. Already nightmare traffic on Moffett. Once everybody determines that you. Cannot get in and out on this side on Moffett, they will take McIntyre as an alternate route. We can't handle that kind of traffic. Bear with me, I have lots of notes. And there's, there's note of preserving the beauty and the trees and all of that. Adding ten buildings and all that concrete, there will be. Adding ten buildings and all that concrete, there will be no trees. Um, there will be increased noise. It, it's, it's not appropriate for this area and I don't know that you're going to find anyone in this community that will find it beneficial or pleasing.
Chairman, I have a question. Has, has anyone, uh, met with anyone in the community? Has there been a meeting?
Is that an answer from the owner?
This is Brian Kelly. We just, we just found out about this, uh, within the last four or five days. And with us just getting our power back, this entire community just got our power back on Sunday evening. So we weren't able to even look at any of these documentations until they came out, uh, once we got our registered letters on Monday.
And every, everyone along McIntyre and Racine would be affected by the increased traffic and only the abutting properties were even notified. I think everybody affected by that should have a chance to voice something.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is going forward. Uh, it, it seems like the consensus is that this is probably going to get held over. And, uh, it doesn't seem like anybody's, uh, in favor of, of access to McIntyre. So, all the stuff about sex offenders is kind of, it's not really related to this development. Uh, and, and some of those other comments, but I mean, the, the primary stuff you just mentioned, I think is off the table anyway.
Uh, I would definitely recommend an opportunity for neighbors to, to, um, somehow be able to meet with, um, you, or representatives from the neighborhood to meet with the, the applicant, um, before. What date did the, um, staff recommend that we hold this up to? Is it our next meeting or the following one?
It's the first meeting in December, which is December third.
Okay, um. Is there a willingness from the, is the applicant still listening to this dialogue? Or are they, are they zooming with us? Good. Would there be an interest for them to sit with some representatives from those different, um, neighborhoods that are talked about today?
We would have to talk, speak to our client, but I, I'm sure they'd be willing.
Uh, that, I, that would be a really good thing to do.
Uh, Margaret, the, uh, the request for holdovers to December seventeenth meeting?
That's in order for, um, thank you. I'm sorry, that is, uh, do stand corrected and that was to allow the PUD to be submitted. So, yes, um, December seventeenth, you are correct, is the meeting.
Not, not the next meeting, but the, the, okay, that, that's even better. Gives more time.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners towards those that are speaking in opposition? And is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? We're going to hold this over to December seventeenth, that I think is sort of the consensus with the applicant, uh, meeting with the neighborhood to, uh, discuss the plan, the development and the applicant providing, uh, a PUD and justification for rezoning.
I'll second Mr. Henry's motion, which I think is what he just did.
That is, that is my motion.
Second, yeah, okay, great.
Oliver, I guess for clarification on the motion, are you asking that the entire application be held over or just the zoning portion? Subdivision and the, uh, the zoning be held over to December seventeenth. Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor for holdover to December seventeenth meeting?
Hi.
Hi.
I have something real quick.
Item passes, I think I heard a comment from someone. Or a potential comment. Was that from?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having really bad audio here. Um, I, in, in regards to the neighborhood meeting with the applicants, I, I just, I have concerns that, that may maybe a little confrontational. I, I think the consensus was that we wanted to voice everything to those in charge of this happening or not happening. I, I don't, I don't know that, you know, arguing with, with the person owning the property and wanting to go forward with this is the best idea.
And this is Doug Anderson. I'm the attorney for the commission. It's our policy to allow for these meetings. It's up to you not to be controversial and to try and see if the developer will, uh, work with you to alleviate your concerns. So, it's always a good idea for people to get together in good faith and, uh, see what can be worked out for the, uh, for the benefit of everybody.
Okay.
Additionally, Ms. Kelly, often the, your city council representative can help facilitate that meeting.
Okay, I believe that's Gina Gregory in this area.
Yeah, somebody could reach out to her and see if she would work with y'all to help, uh, facilitate the meeting.
Okay.
And, and I'll be sure to let her know about the comments because I report back to, um, my colleagues as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, please, um, prepare for the next applicant, item number three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Alan Cameron. I believe I have to recuse myself on this one.
All right, as the record shows, Mr. Cameron is recused on item number three, forty-five eighty-three Cypress Business Park Drive. Next applicant, number three.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have admitted into the meeting, uh, I've admitted into the meeting Jay Watkins, who I believe will be speaking first, Adam Dour, Bruce Morris, and Sher- Sarah Schoffelberger, and I apologize if I have said your name poorly.
I think you did well with that.
Pardon?
I think you did well with that.
Thank you. Uh, and then, uh, council member John Williams is here as an interested party. And then, uh, Jan Evans is here as a concerned party, uh, in opposition to the application. Before Mr. Watkins gets started, I do have to bring to the commission's attention that you did receive from staff Ms. Evans comments as well as comments submitted to you this morning from the Bluffsett Cypress Creek Homeowners Association.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're here about item number three, forty-five eighty-three Cypress Business Park subdivision, PUD and planning approval, all recommended tentative approval. Uh, the floor is open for Mr. Watkins to please, elaborate on, on the, on the project as well as any comments you want to share with the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with y'all today. Uh, I'm Jay Watkins with Maynard Cooper and Gale, uh, eleven North Water Street, Suite twenty-four two ninety, Mobile three six six oh two. Uh, our firm represents TPA Ventures LLC, which is the applicant, uh, for a new, uh, warehouse and distribution center development that's going to go at forty-five eighty-three Cypress Business Park Drive. Uh, this is a forty-one, almost forty-two acre tract that is in the southeast quadrant of where I-ten and Range Line, uh, cross. Um, the property is currently zoned B-three and B-five. And, uh, the applicant, uh, would intend to create a two-lot subdivision with the lot line following the break where the B-three and B-five uh, convert, uh, change over. Uh, their intent is to build about a hundred and eighty-two thousand square foot office warehouse and distribution center. They will have, uh, items delivered to that facility, uh, by semi-truck and those, those packages will be broken down and then shipped out in smaller vehicles for what is basically known as a last mile delivery, uh, delivery center. We had a meeting that, uh, Councilman Williams, uh, organized with the surrounding neighborhood, uh, on the twenty-eighth of October and went over with them, uh, the proposed plan as well as some of the operational hours of the facility and, uh, how the facility will be, uh, will be working. Um, and we heard from them some concerns that they have about the traffic that will be, uh, accessing this site. And have, uh, noted in the staff report that a traffic study is going to be required by traffic engineering prior to any building permits being issued. I think, uh, TPA Ventures is equally interested in having that traffic study to better understand the traffic flow uh, along I-ten and on, uh, Range Line Road and how, uh, this particular project will, uh, add to that traffic flow. The applicant has, uh, developed these type sites in the past and has a pretty strong understanding of uh, how these facilities will operate. Uh, generally, uh, deliveries will be coming in by semi-truck, uh, in the late evening, uh, and overnight hours. Then around, uh, nine AM, um, the, uh, the, the delivery drivers will arrive and start, uh, taking, uh, the delivery trucks out onto their set routes. So generally avoiding the early morning, uh, work and school traffic. Uh, those vans generally leave the site from around nine AM till around noon. Uh, and then they would be returning from their routes in the six-thirty, seven o'clock hour up until nine or nine-thirty. So, uh, the, the applicant, again, understands this, this industry, understands, uh, the traffic flow that they will be creating and will be providing all that information to the, the traffic study, uh, folks who will be delivering that report to, um, to staff. So, um, we have, uh, reviewed the staff comments and, uh, conditions. Our applicant is, uh, happy with those. We've got no comments or, or requested changes. And so, uh, we are here to answer questions about this development that, uh, anyone on the commission has or staff has. Uh, and would, uh, would ask that you look at this and, uh, grant the planning approval, uh, PUD and subdivision application that's been submitted.
Thank you, sir. Is there, are there any other, uh, are there any questions from commissioners? Is there anyone else here to speak for this?
Uh, we have both the, uh, applicant, uh, Mr. Adam Dour with TPA Ventures. And then we have, uh, Bruce Morris with Prime Engineering. We're here to answer questions. I don't know that they necessarily have anything to add to the presentation unless there are specific questions of either of them.
Jay did a great job explaining the project. Uh, I'm here to field any questions. Thank you for your time.
Looks like the concerns that have been expressed by the neighborhood would be just mainly traffic and runoff are the two concerns that I'm seeing. I know Jay briefly touched on traffic. Uh, could some, could Jay or you or, uh, you know, y'all address the issue of that runoff?
Right, yes, sir. You'll see, Mr. Henry, that, uh, the site plan has two, uh, retention ponds and, uh, on either end of the site. And that will collect runoff and storm water, uh, at the sites. Um, the developer will have, uh, filtration systems within those, detention areas, uh, to treat the water before it is returned, uh, back to, uh, back to the, the sites off the property. Um, I think Mr. Morris with Prime Engineering is here and could potentially address, uh, anything if you have more detailed questions than that, but the, the project will comply with all of the City of Mobile stormwater, uh, requirements and ordinance. And, uh, as I said, they will go above and beyond that in, in, including, uh, landscaping that will provide some filtration as the water arrives to the detention areas and then filtration once it's there before it is released.
Thank you. Mary Beth, could you address the, uh, traffic concerns?
Yes, sir. I'm, I am, uh, very much aware of the issues that the neighborhood has and their concerns. Um, we have, we've worked with them before on the area around Higgins Road and its intersection with Cypress Business Park. Um, there's no direct access from Range Line to this area. There's indirects. You got to make a, a right and you turn under the bridge and take the service road around or go all the way down to Toftsing and travel back through the neighborhood. Um, there are a lot of conflict points where the service road and Range Line and Higgins and Cypress Business Park all come together. There's a lot of high-speed movements because of the high speeds on Range Line Road and the access onto the ramps. And so that is primarily where our concern is and where we will be asking them to focus, uh, their efforts. Uh, it is overlapping with the DOTs right away as well. So any improvements that may extend into the Range Line Service Road or the Main Line will also need to be re- reviewed and approved by the DOT. If for some reason there's any modifications to the ramp that may be required, they would be involved as well. So it's a, it's a, a high ask, but it's a very localized area that they have to look at. I don't imagine it would be too widespread. Um, I don't know that they would look at, uh, adding a left off of Range Line to Higgins. I don't know that the DOT would be open to that idea since it is so close to the interstate ramps there. Um, that is something they can look at. Um, but I think they'll, it, the plan will have to be to, to consider accesses to the site from Range Line, the service road around, under the bridge and back, back over towards Higgins and Cypress Business Park. And then how it leaves is a big deal too, because if you're not familiar with the area, Higgins is the primary road through there. It does not have stop control. Um, so traffic coming off of Range Line from the south, um, is basically free, free flow. Um, the only yield they have to make is to anyone coming from Higgins if they're coming around and, um, and wanting to go to Cypress Business Park. So it, it is a, it's a very highly congested. I, I say congested, it's going to be, it would be more, more congested with the improved development at this site, but, um, that, that's, that is our primary area of concern is how that can be handled because it can't be handled under the conditions that are there now.
And I, I think from our perspective, uh, Mary Beth has very accurately reflected, uh, some of the pinch points and some of the concerns that the neighbors have raised and, and honestly concerns that the developer has. And I think, um, this project is going to, uh, depend on there being ready access and easy access, um, to this site. And I think, uh, the traffic study is going to reflect things that could be done to improve this area. I think the developer, uh, really would like to see those things happen. I know we've had conversations with, uh, Mayor Stimson and the administration about, uh, improvements that may be made here. Signalization, stop signs, uh, widening of some of the, uh, the ramps, um, uh, from Higgins, where it bleeds right into the, uh, uh, on, uh, the I-ten on-ramp. Uh, there's been conversations about, um, widening and paving or improving uh, in some way Shipyard Road, which is a little further to the, to the, uh, we'll say east. And, uh, providing, uh, better, uh, ways of ingress and egress to the neighbors so that they don't have to necessarily be forced to come down Cypress. I think there are a lot of opportunities, uh, that are available to improve this area, uh, traffic-wise. And again, I think that uh, traffic study will pinpoint some of the areas and some of the opportunities that there are to, uh, to, uh, improve this area, which would allow this use to not have an impact on the surrounding neighborhood.
Margaret, could you take us to the zoning map? So the, the, uh, the request is to go to, uh, B, was it B, B-five?
No, sir, we're not asking for any zoning change. We're, uh, simply asking that, uh, we have planning approval uh, for this warehouse use in the B-three zone, which is allowed under charter permitted uses. It is allowed by right in the B-five, but it is allowed by, with approval in B-three. And so we're, we're not currently seeking any type of rezoning. I think ultimately, if this project goes forward and the, all the easement areas are acquired, staff would like us to come in and have the entire parcel zone be five. staff would like us to come in and have the entire parcel zoned B-five just for consistency purposes, and our, our client is certainly willing to do that. And so I think we've mentioned that to the neighbors and they understand that this would not be any type of industrial use. We would not be coming in for any rezone for anything in the I categories, but that this rezoning would, would come after this particular site was permitted and under construction so that they could be assured that it would be just a warehouse distribution facility. And so what we are asking for today is the subdivision, which would cure the split zone, and then the PA, which would allow the use within the red area or the B-three area.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Thank you. Any more questions, comments from commissioners? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jan Evans.
Yes, I'm not necessarily here to oppose the application, but my particular interest is my, and my concern is the traffic. I own the property that on Higgins and Cypress Business Drive. It's a rental house that sits on three acres. The ingress and egress of the proposed plan will go past my property in the front and on the side. I'm frankly concerned about my property value because I don't know that I can retain my renters when there's traffic coming in and out at night and during the day. There's going to be a lot of traffic and noise and going forward, I don't know if I'll be able to attract a renter. So I'd like the engineers to, the traffic engineers to pay particular attention to that intersection and figure out some way, whether it be to cut across Range Line into the, to Higgins Road or what, but that's my major concern.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by commissioners or comments from commissioners?
Not really a question, just a comment from a commercial development standpoint. Something like this should help your property value.
Are you interested?
Any response from the applicant concerning those comments?
We, we, again, certainly recognize the increase that traffic will have. And we are, again, our project will be subject to traffic engineering receiving and approving a traffic study and any comments or, or requirements that they may have that they've reserved in the staff report. And so I think, again, we, we understand that this is an increase in traffic, but I, I believe that what will turn out, come out from this is opportunities to improve the, the environment down there from a traffic perspective.
The good news is there's a lot of, there's a lot of aldi right away there. So I mean, there's a lot of room to straighten things out and, and make it work.
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we, we're, we're, we're through with our presentation and unless the staff or commission members have further questions, we, again, accept the staff's recommendations and comments and conditions and would, would ask the commission to approve all three of these applications.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else to speak against?
No, sir.
Heard everyone for and everyone and those concerned neighbors as well. Is there now closed public deliberations? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just, just for the record, there was another email that was mentioned about from the HOA, the Bluffett Cypress Creek HOA board that we've, we've seen and read.
They duly noted in our, in our records that there were additional comments that were emailed in.
Sorry, I don't understand.
We're going to take these items one at a time? Yes, you'll take them one at a time, begin with item A, the subdivision, which is recommended tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes or three B, the PUD? Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts, A, B, and D.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Imposed? Item B passes? Item C, planning approval? Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts, A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Imposed? Item passes? That concludes all agenda items. Is there any other business or things to come before us from staff?
No, sir.
Excuse me. Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.